Alright, let's go ahead and call a meeting in order. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes from two months ago?
I can't remember from two months ago, but I did rate.
He sent them to you?
Yeah, he sent them to you.
Okay, that's my good face. Well, I had searched for the wrong email address. It's clouded by it.
Please be all campy.
I'll look for proof.
Second. The discussion?
All paper.
These on comments.
On. Someone added Queen Mountain water line in the town of Highlands.
Yeah, I added that already.
All I got.
Anyone here from the public? Does the media have any comments? Get us on to the items of discussion. So Matt's created a summary of the items from the town of Highlands and the town of Franklin. Of the items that they had expressed.
Basically, I've just summarized everything that the municipalities had summarized.
And we would need to add Queen Mountain.
That's some of the, I gave out some that were wrong. Here's the new one. I didn't know I had two sixes. This is the one that had the Queen Mountain, not the Chris.
Well, that's your government.
Sorry about that. Make sure the press gets the right one. The Queen Mountain has been added to the town of Highlands water replacement out there. That's probably their highest priority.
Down that dam, I think the two projects in town of Highlands.
They're proofing their budget?
Yeah, so they're only running Queen Mountain line down to the city limits.
And then, of course, the last, the final paragraph, that's once you read through the summary suggesting, I think that what the town of Franklin are all the same. It says if we, if proposed recommendations are approved, should middle the board of commissioners. I'm encouraging that maintenance agreements must be formed for all the existing proposed infrastructure that lies outside the town of Highlands and outside the LBJ for town Franklin. By forming these partnerships, assisting each municipality with their infrastructure needs, making county beholden benefit time back. This is something that we support or in favor of the recommendations on.
What are the recommendations? You're saying a maintenance agreement that the town will maintain those lines outside the city limit?
I think that's more of a discussion between commissioner and town of Highlands, but there's some sort of maintenance agreement, whether it is the city or the, I mean, the county's probably not getting the maintenance business as well.
Right.
So Bill, I think what we're discussing is should the, should the county assist the municipalities with funding of one or all of these projects?
Which order we're making and the recommendation, what you're saying.
I think we should be put. Yeah, I think we're saying as a board that we think this is the best interest of the citizens of making county for the commissioners to consider maybe forming these projects. No, I think we're going to specify, should the county be involved in replacement of chlorine water, gas treatment?
Is that what we're about to discuss?
I think that's what we're about to discuss. And that's the goal today, this determine. Yeah, the mayor was here talking about stuff with the town of Highlands and then Justin was here talking about stuff with town Franklin.
I'll ask this way, how much in the past, with the exception of outside the county, with outside the city limits, has the county supported Franklin's water system? Have they ever supported it inside the city limits also? Kind of ancillary?
I don't, I don't think so. I think most of the support the county came from. Like, well, you want to find one of the schools or industrial parks.
Centerly.
The new development center of the county, which is based there, of course. That opened up a lot of real estate and wealth.
Of these, excuse me, but these eight major issues, how many of those are in the city and how many are outside of it?
Most of it is right in the construction. I'm not quite sure, I don't recall. It was in that infiltration study that I don't really, that's location. And I'm thinking Westwicke and I figured it had to be somewhere along that street.
But all that came out of here, infiltration study.
Yeah, it's all in there, I saw it. There's nothing, they don't know about.
And I would say that.
The town that knows about it.
Commissioners may not know.
Could you imagine, but the town's aware.
And that infiltration study is probably a minimum, so city control, ETC, which are, so by following.
And what state is that in as far as the town planning and having funding for those up there?
Some of them are pretty big repairs, you know, they get as they, the repairs they can. Ash fall plants, everything carried up and everything. Right now, I don't know of any immediate ones here after what happened the next month or two or three.
So they don't have a schedule that we're going to do this and this, this year?
No, I don't know of the schedule saying they're going to do the local drive, you know, September. They're all, they're all pretty big projects.
Is there a specific part of the budget that goes toward these?
Oh, unless you're in the public, in the public works, there is their section just for water, so it's all, all that goes towards that would come out of there more unless they got a grant.
Like the job corps, like the water sewer, both the job corps.
Job corps is sewer.
Sewer too. It's the town, the county that can get the grant somehow. I think there's, I don't think they've got all that squared away, even though some of it's still a limbo about who actually owns it, who many teams, you know, the county's able to get the money, but gee, or get a grant, it doesn't cost the town anything. So that's when you start, you know, if it's an industrial park or it's a school or something, county has the best interest in it, I'm okay with that. You know, I, I don't know. Planting water, we accept our, if there's no money to be, I mean, I think that's one step right there.
When we started this study, it was to look at the necessity or the benefits of expanding the sewer, which obviously comes to involve the county pretty quickly. And what we ended up finding out that was primarily the problem is we didn't, we needed to expand capacity, but that we needed to look at repairing and keeping serviceable what we've got. So that kind of puts it into a different, puts it back into the town since, I mean, that's why we're having this discussion. But I think the fact that we ended up deciding that we really did not need to recommend any expansion answered a major part of what we were trying to do. And then we came down to decide the necessity for repair and maintenance is that, does the county get involved?
Yeah, I think, I think the board that was used was a capital, you know, a capital expense project, whether that be under repairs or that be expanding the current system, I think they're all capital expenses. So I think to look at what's in the interest of making county and citizens as far as these projects, if the county should pursue them or not. Or if they should leave it to the discretion of the municipalities, if they want to continue service areas outside of the other director's station.
But there were some places, like your demand, that we had put some water out there, Jim? I mean, there's people that they need water.
Right.
And you can't decide what we got the town.
I think that was another case where they, whether the county able to generate some sort of rural center funding or something for that. And then that's not also include, pardon, get their oil school, if they were going, they would be going.
And the county paid for that?
I don't know about all of them. I don't know if the county, unless they had any account. But they got a, I think they got a grant, big portion, a small portion.
It's my understanding. And I think if the county can get involved to get their grant, means, I mean, you know. But my thought is definitely something within the city limits of either. I think the cities need to stand on their own two feet. And when you get outside that city limit, and I think that becomes a different subject because now they're not, you know, if you're living in the city, the city needs to take care of those people that are paying the city taxes and all for the things. Why, if I'm paying town of Highlands taxes, do I need to be supporting, putting water outside? Those people that aren't having to pay a tax, I'm having to pay. But yet they're going to serve the benefit and only pay, and I think everybody, I think both places, it's twice the rate. But I'll pay twice the rate if I don't have to pay my taxes.
You know, you couldn't say it was a trade off.
Right. That's what, that's what I'm saying. It's, they're, they're receiving a big benefit and not having to pay the tax for it.
So they're not getting all the services the town does, you know, getting the release of fire. You know, I don't know what else, but anyway, they are paying double the rates for Frank, uh, Franklin, I said Highlands about the sun.
I think that's, I think that's what all those people at Queen Mountain pay.
So you're saying outside the city limits, maybe there's room for discussion there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like right here, town of Highlands, and I'm just much more familiar with that, obviously. But you look at that line replacement on Split Rail, I think it's going to be $600,000 was the number I saw. And I understand all those people also pay county taxes, but I don't want, the commissioners have to try and increase the taxes to make a budget for, so that they can help pay for that. Where I think the town of Highlands, I mean, they're, they're the ones that are installing it, they're the ones that are going to get the money for it, and it's within the town. Now, that Queen Mountain deal, that's a different subject in a way because now, why are they spending city dollars on, on county property out of, out of city limit?
Are all the ones in Franklin within the town?
All the ones there.
All the ones we listed there were in the infiltration study, but it was limited just to town.
None of these involved outside of the city limit.
Not right now.
Jimmy, how do y'all, how do y'all feel about that?
I'll, I'll try and clarify it all the way I'm hearing and understanding it is. The board of county commissioners tasked this board with trying to do some planning, trying to help the board see, figure out, decide where future growth might be, where water sewer, whatever needs might be, to help the county down the road. Primarily so that the county can start thinking about, maybe start budgeting, putting some money aside for where we might need to do future growth. Well, we interviewed both the town, both towns for that matter. Both towns said that, well, we're really not interested in expanding anywhere. We need to take care of what we got. We'd rather see some money come towards repairs and maintenance on what we have, if the county will do it. Well, I'm only one commissioner, I don't know if the county's interested in helping them repair and maintain. You know, in the past, the county's helped build this infrastructure, both in Highlands and in Franklin. And then they've given this over to the municipalities. Municipalities have been looking after it, collecting the rates and the fees off of it, which the county has nothing of, you know, there's time for maintenance and they, they've helped with this. Now, there are some interesting facts because some of this, these areas aren't necessarily in the municipalities. They're being serviced in Highlands, you've got the hospital and Queen Mountain. In Franklin, you've got several areas from the LBJ, I don't know on the back, but I'll let, I'll let the county go on, of course, only one voting in the town, the county will be involved. But we were originally hoping to figure out where we're going to be heading. Is it the airport? Is it schools? Is it commercial development? And where we need to start sticking back some money to help figure that out, start up the plans. But it doesn't look like the municipality do, or one seemed interested in either thing, other than Highlands wants some money for dam repair, Queen Mountain and Franklin, I think the LBJ. Sewer needs to be replaced, there's some other areas outside.
It was also the thing on the other board that we wanted to encourage, because capacity was far from being reached, that we wanted to encourage the more intensive development requiring those services to locate where we had existing water and sewer. So it wasn't, I would like, just, the town, both of the towns did express an interest in the repair, but also from a more long-term planning standpoint, we felt that to try to focus growth on the area where that infrastructure existed was a positive thing.
I agree.
And I want to see that included in any notes to the commission, that, that it was an actual sort of growth management tool to suggest that growth be focused in areas where the infrastructure exists.
Now, I'm presenting, I'll tell you, I guess the gentleman of the kind of boards that are obviously, probably the two of you, and you're up to speak, you're not bitching about two cents to whatever we want from that line, on what we're asking next.
So I think it sounds, I know John feels that if it's in town limits, it needs to, it needs to be the towns.
But I think it's only benefited, I think it's, if it's only, you know, now, the dam refurbishment, I don't know how you look at that, but on just water, I, I think it's, I mean, I'd love for the county to pay a lot of stuff, but I doubt the taxes will go down in the cities. I don't know that it's their problem, I mean, I think, and I'm with Jimmy on the maintenance. I mean, they've been getting money for all this, all these times, maybe they should have been holding some of those, you know, fees back to plan to maintain it later on.
Well, John, how do you run the water line at Queen Mountain or replace it and not go to Highland View or go down to Blue Valley or wherever? The people on Buck Creek, they don't get that water service. I'm just saying, if you have no water, then you're messed up, but.
Why is that the town of Highlands' problem?
Exactly.
Why is that the town of Franklin's problem if you're outside? That is a, either a county problem or your personal problem.
But the county is not in water business.
So.
So therefore, Queen Mountain, if I was those people on Queen Mountain that couldn't get water, I believe I would be pooling some money together if the town is still willing to give them a water service. Just what you were talking about. We as taxpayers in town of Highlands have built that water treatment plant, and we'd keep it up. We'd pay those town employees, whether you've got a double rate or a triple rate or whatever. So to me, those people on Queen Mountain would be wise to say, hey, look, we're going to pay for the replacement of that water line as long as you guys will keep service and giving us water.
Right, agreed. And that's what I'm saying. They can make money off of it, take it to there and, you know, leave it.
In some cases, it's a natural benefit to growth that you can't have too many ounces on a bit of rock if you're not willing to pay for water.
Yeah, I mean, that.
I mean, I would hook on the town sewer if it come down in front of my shop, but it don't. And I'm inside city limits to pay city taxes. Been there for 25 years and still can't get city sewer. So you know, that's part of it. My tax dollars ought to be paid for expansion of water and sewer prepared within the town limits. And the county is not in water business.
Agree. If, if the county wants to step in and help the county residents, but then, it goes back to, well, you're helping this area, you're going to help that one where it's not, you know.
You're setting it up.
It's nowhere near.
I've got a lot on Buck Creek, I need water. I can't get a well, I can't, all this other stuff, I can't get a septic system. Well, I need city sewer and city water and everything on my property on Buck Creek. Is the county going to pay for that to be out there? I don't think so.
You know, I could see the county having the best interest for the school or possibly a big undeveloped high school or something's going to create jobs, hospitals, you know. But even so, you might, the county might have interest in some kind of refurbishment at Lake Sequoie. But I mean, unless you go past that, you can't be here.
Very good.
But then you also have the water line going to Queen Mountain with branches of that water line going to different areas that, that's not necessarily feeding only Queen Mountain.
Well, that, I mean, the town of Highlands feeds, they feed, there's a water line down whole road, and I don't know where all it goes down there, but they, it's not just Queen Mountain, kind of how it serves.
But it's not fair, like you were saying, it's not fair to the other people outside the city that don't have that water service, and then all of a sudden, you're just going to take one community and provide that service.
I think a lot of that was old time.
You all probably told me before, how long has this Queen Mountain water line been? Twenty years, almost seven, I think?
Yeah.
Or more like four?
I'm not sure if there was information, was that part of the plan?
I can't remember. It's super old. It's one of those deals, I doubt it would have been done today, but it was done. And so now, the town has a commitment to some point to service it, to supply water. Supplying the water's not the problem, it's the maintenance and.
In Mackin County, how would that happen? I'm originally from Burke County, and Duke Energy Crescent Properties decided to do major development on Lake James. The county, the town run the water lines and the sewer lines up there for their fancy development. Don't even let people in between use it. But because Crescent and Duke had, well, they got water and sewer lines all the way up to the early planning developments, which is now maintained and being expanded. How do we, in the future, might have Queen Mountain or whoever manages to get, I mean, what are the guidelines for the county or the towns extending sewer lines to development? We, that is something we, I think we need to make about.
First, could the town, would everyone accept it?
I hear the town of Franklin, except if you're, they come out through your front yard, with the water line to go to the school or something, or well, if the town, everybody wanted to go, you know, you could go on there.
I don't know how.
As long as it's not pressurized.
Water's always pressurized.
I'm about sewer.
You look, it's all pressurized, but you gotta have about a $15,000 pump or something.
The, the town did not let all those people hook on the water that went to the hospital.
They did?
No.
Because of supply.
I don't know if it's.
Chestnut Hill and Hospital, I think so.
It was also, but did the hospital chip in and pay for any of that, or was that all? But, and that may be back to that Duke thing, it may be who, who paid for that line, you know, when you were talking, where you were.
They do may have helped pay for the line, but it does then become the county's.
How would you get across somebody's land, though? If you came to ask me for heating for water line or sewer line.
Or it's down the highway.
That is fine.
They just went down 64 and just turned up, somebody. But I don't, I'm pretty sure they did not let anybody.
Along the way to do it.
But they may have even done that before they expanded the water treatment plant up there. So they may not have had the capacity to do it at that time.
But they're still not today letting people tap on it.
But it seems like if we're making some kind of recommendation for future infrastructure, it should include some aspect of that you don't randomly extend water and sewer to something without built-in provision for maintenance.
Now, I know a subdivision I lived in, they asked to annex, annexed into the town of Highlands. They accepted it, and they wanted to run sewer and water. And they, they, in the town, made subdivision run much bigger than was needed lines. I mean, I think there's an eight-inch water line, and essentially it dead ends on the, at the city limits. For the 20 lots up there, they sure didn't need the eight-inch water line. And all the way to the top, they, I think, ran a six. Some of that was for fire protection, but then all of a sudden it gets in, then, do you mind if we cut across your property here and tie it back in on this? So they, they did plan for the future at the expense of developers of the subdivision.
A lot of times, they do play the four-inch line or two-inch line, six-inch line, but it's just caution.
Right, you still got dignity.
Still got dignity, so.
But I mean, I think we tied it on to a four and went to an eight, and we give a sub.
If I can get to an eight, sometimes you'll put the water, water treatment too.
Where's that leaving us at?
I'm more confused from when we started.
Is that the right approach? I think there's, there's two, there's two issues at hand, I think. One is utilize, it's coming up with some plan to utilize existing infrastructure as well as trying to give the commissioner some guidance as to, so they need to get the water sewer business. That's what it sounds like to me.
Chris, have we ever voted as a board to say that we don't think it's necessary for any particular expansion of the water? Have we ever made that statement?
I mean, we discussed that and kind of came to that, came to that.
That's why.
And it seems like if that's perhaps our most important statement to the commission is that this time, we do not see the necessity for expansion of water and sewer, and that one of the reasons for that is to promote concentration of growth within this existing infrastructure.
Well, in the utility business, nobody makes any money if you don't have so much investment per mile or for, you know, having. And that's whether your water, sewer, electric, or phone, or whatever. You know, maybe the town rates were out of town, out of town waters behind it. And what this looks like is that, to me, is that the real assets that the town of Franklin had are outside of city limits, probably those are all newer lines, which were built last 20 years or so. Where the burden is, is trying to maintain those things that are, you know, you know, yeah, 70 years old or maybe not that old, but. I don't know what that looks like, you know, I don't know if any of this is chalk, you know, segregating.
So are we in agreement, or not, I mean, that we need to not expand any line?
What do you want to make a motion? Yeah, we haven't, I think, that's what everybody else talked about, just it.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we need report to the commissioners that after consulting. Yeah, I would make a motion that we need report to the commissioners that after consulting with county, county agencies and representatives, that we do not feel expansion of sewer and water lines is necessary at this time or for the foreseeable future, and that we, uh, one of the reasons for that is to encourage the use of existing infrastructure, which is operating far below capacity.
Did you get all that in your campaign? Somebody cried out. Was there a second anywhere?
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Before we vote, I mean, I'm, as a taxpayer, I'm fine, I'm only one vote, but I'm fine with commissioners and respective boards of the town working together on these things that they think are, to benefit of all the citizens, kind of the fund.
That might be a part too, we might need a second statement really to...
I think that'll come under...
I'm fine with talking, but I don't think that I have enough information to recommend that they put in, you know, the Z dollars of any kind.
I think there might be a second recommendation.
I think she just said major, major expansion.
The first recommendation is that we don't need to expand and why, and then we may have a second recommendation that deals with town and county relations, lines outside the town.
Susan's motion is in, in regards to the original question that we considered, that do we need to expand capital and set aside capital for the next or expansion, and I think we're saying no.
No, we're sort of looking at, setting aside and...
Well, I think, right, I think now the next question's gonna be, well, what do we do, all these are maintenance issues.
I have a question. I mean, what is the potential growth on sixty-four West with the ball fields? If we're gonna make a suggestion that we do no expansion, I mean, is that...
I don't have any grace, I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, is that something that we're setting stone by saying that? How open is that discussion in the future?
You're, you're in so much distance of the intake rack and the water line, which doesn't, how's that gonna play out?
The regular area doesn't go very far. It's parked out, the river area. But anyway, in response to your question, that would leave, really, ideas because of the, in that little area between the intake and the ball field, one of those would be...
The whole area, and there's that part of the watershed, the town of Franklin, there's a part of the watershed, so there's some restrictions on...
You're, you're set with slot size, as it, as it stands, you can get exceptions to that, to that, for non-residents. And, uh, I don't know, I may elaborate on the question, Chris, that there is a lot of potential for growth out in that area for commercial use due to the ball market. Uh, one thing that might be that Mackin County and Franklin, these two areas, we're most assured of is hotels for events, and that's a lot of the discussion, that people that would wanna sponsor some events, company, is where are we gonna stay? Gonna stay as far away as, uh, Queensville, Ashville, uh, Georgia, Chicago, how far do you have to go to house, three thousand, four thousand people this weekend? So, I'm not saying...
Three thousand and four thousand people are coming to the ball field?
Well, I'm just, I didn't make any comments, but, uh, there's somebody consider that that would be a good idea, but it's, it's not just that heavy. So, there is a potential for that.
So I'm just asking by making that statement, are we setting in stone as a board that we feel that there should be no water and sewer run out there unless the town funds it?
No, I think because that's sort of following what Mark said, because it's like a school, you know, it's a function of the county, and I would justify it.
Yes, they do. Most of these people, uh, while wanting, they wanted the annex, you know, the town, and they have to pay our tax to be of legal protection to get water, so, I mean, there's, if you get a major, um, project, it's probably gonna happen with, without our blessing.
Well, yeah, I'm just asking.
I think you'd say based upon the information that's been provided, it would be a, you know...
I mean, we could have a little volunteer saying, you know, realizing that the need, you know, could arise in a specific area, but, I mean, it's a general, I think we're making a general policy statement that we would like to see major development go where the infrastructure exists, and if something occurs outside of that, then certainly the commission would respond anyway.
More discussion? All in favor? Okay, so we got that out of the way, we're not gonna expand the system.
Yeah, we need a part.
So that leaves us back to, I guess, where our conversation started, Chris, that was too...
Too much.
Too last to maintenance, because I think that's essentially the question, should the county be involved in maintenance of the lines? Which is kind of beyond, I think, in fact, Susan's statement, I think that's maybe a little bit beyond what we're actually tasked to do, because I think the task was more of capital projects or expansion and not necessarily directed at maintenance.
Well, I think if we had found that, you know, if, if we already had lines out in the county that needed maintenance, I think that would be a very high priority, and, I mean, I kind of agree with the statements that it is different if a line runs out through the county, that, that the county might have some involvement in that, because they've probably been involved in the decision to put that line in here.
Yeah, like, like I mean, the one at the schools.
Yeah.
Let, let's take that, in twenty years, and that line needs maintenance, I, I think that's definitely gonna need, needs, or is gonna probably fall back on the county, because it's, it's, use and benefit is to the county.
Can somebody phrase something about that lines outside of town limits that serve facilities for the use and benefit of the county should be maintained by the county?
If I may, I, I think it's a way for us to do much with existing, and what arrangements and treatments were made, I don't think anybody knows.
Uh-huh.
But I would recommend that if you, but if you make any recommendation to the commission that you're gonna grant any expansion outside of the, the town, I would recommend that it be made.
That's, so for future construction, the last year, I had that.
Yeah, the early ones. We're glad you'd be there.
So, so if that's, that may already be in place, we may not, I don't know that we need to recommend that, you know, from what Jim is saying.
So the only thing on this list that's jumped out at me is just going to go back to the Queen Mountain. We just have a group of people that purchase property with understanding that have water, and now, and now they don't, so now...
Set a precedent, from set a precedent, so you don't supply them with water. Well, who set the precedent for the president? The panel, the county, whoever decided to put it in there. So you're also probably, clearly involved with that program, because the county involved a lot of that, like eighty, fifty, the lines.
The developer put it in, just tied it, tied it into the town, I mean, with permission.
But there was no maintenance agreement of any sort.
Well, they're actually, probably didn't have one.
Yeah, that, that wasn't, nobody thought that part, he was...
I mean, that's all Forest Service line did.
So, like Swiss Colony and water, they're outside of...
They were, they probably regulated water system.
They, they were owned privately, owned by just a local person, owned the water system out there. I can tell you where it is and what it looks like, with those names.
They also...
I agree on both of those water systems, well, I'm hard to agree on those water systems. In the last few years, I understand that the town has taken over, that they were privately owned, because every time we transferred our house, we had to transfer that water system and give them Mr. Hargreaves' name and number, because they were paying him, they were privately owned, and they had, had to test it every, so often, so it's just been recent, not too long ago, the town got involved in it.
Once you're on a regulated water system, the utility commission has responsibility to try to encourage a reliable water system, or reliable system, and, um, I don't know, I think about two thousand seven or eight, I looked at a lot out there with my daughter, it turned out, it's a good deal on the lot, so I went back to locate it, and I found that you had to have buy a second lot to get the well on, that they had a moratorium you look at.
There's a lot of that. And another water system that's been put in, the most recent that I, and why we're gonna borrow, was Westwood that Marty Hughes put in there on the, trying to park, now that's got city water too.
It's not a regulated water system, I don't have it do that, that's been about ten or fifteen years, I don't know.
But that's been recently, that was one that I can remember that he put in and put city water, city sewer to it.
Was the county involved in any of that?
The county has a line.
Hundred percent town funding.
I think they probably developed it, like, directed it out for...
Likewise with the Swiss Colony stuff.
I don't know, Swiss Colony goes back...
Swiss Colony's private.
Well, then they just run the water line out there.
They do.
The town replaced it.
That's what once got the grant of water.
That's what the county sourced up in and took the grant.
I'm trying to figure out how that compares to Queen Mountain.
Basically, the riverbank, the county just helped the grant from Gulf Stream Project.
See, the grant may have only come about because we're trying to beat up the regulated water system, the full of them may have been on the cap three, if I don't know.
But Jack, were you saying that you don't think it's, that we don't need to address the issue of future maintenance agreements, and that's already...
I think so, I think we learned that.
So, that you don't think there, that we, there doesn't need to be any kind of policy statement about it, you think that's taken care of?
I think that's taken care of. There's some problems happening now, but it's a little bit more...
So then I guess, back to, to real, now the question is, is the county wanna get involved in these projects, and if, no, we're good, we're all...
The, the dam refurbishment, it was the other one, possibly, that is, that, I, that dam, I guess, is a benefit to the town of Highlands because of, it holds the back the water source.
Well, it's a benefit to the county that it doesn't fall down.
It doesn't bother us if it falls, in the, yeah, so I guess the county ought to think about it.
I tell you, it's where you are in the country. You know, if you were, uh, considering utility, and a dam, you'd trouble yourself with rights, because, yeah, I mean, solution for the town.
Well, I'd say if the core's on top of, they can't do that much.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it's that.
Well, they couldn't, because they get, they get, and take it on, and...
They're just gonna do it to that one.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So no expansion? Go with the list, touching it.
Well, the Queen Mountain's still up for debate, has anybody answered that?
I don't know.
Four people is there, God.
You do, Queen Mountain, all these little subdivisions around Franklin, and there's a lot of them around outside the city limits, are we gonna have to go in there and fix those every time they carry up? Because I could have had one out here on the Georgia Road, and there's some out there. But if, if you start fixing one, then my water cars are packed up, and I expect the county to come in and fix it.
Let's just ask a question.
So you know...
But, but are you voting to city water?
Yes, the city water, and right up behind the mixturbine, I think, or something.
Outside of the city, now?
Yes.
You're speaking, if you're, the problem before you give the leaders, utility is a vulnerable part, and it's beyond leaders.
Beyond leaders, right.
You rent it or the landlord.
But they make, they make the developer put the lines in to the property, and they put city water to it.
So you have one meter for the whole, that's the main.
And then it's broke down.
I think she's just saying, the developer's just putting in the infrastructure, which is often typical. The developer puts in infrastructure, and then when it's completed and approved by the municipality, they have to get over to them.
What was your understanding about what happened, this line has to be replaced? I mean, you weren't thinking about that?
At that time, we were, they were a foul effort, and they wasn't all understanding.
What's the town's problem?
Put that down, bro.
And you, the town are responsible too, so... I think once they accept it, that's the policy now, I don't know.
Yeah, but we're still going back to Queen Mountain, which was put in before policy, and then a handshake was about all it got.
And has the town already voted to give him the line to the land, to the county?
I think it has passed it around to the city limits.
Yes.
I mean, there's plenty of grants you can give to the, to the, out of the lot, we could probably fix that.
As a, as a HOA or as a municipality?
Yeah, I mean, either one is likely.
Well, is there a contract in place with Queen Mountain, the town of Highlands, for the town of Highlands that they have to provide water to Queen Mountain? So then you look at, is there a contract in place that we're gonna guarantee you water? Well then, is there a contract in place with the, uh, Queen Mountain and the county that the county's gonna be responsible for that water system to provide them water? That goes back to what I was saying earlier, they're talking, what, was it six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars to replace the lines, is that what they're talking about? That is a fraction of what it would cost Queen Mountain to put in a, a complete water system with power and everything else, and if I was a homeowner in Queen Mountain, and, and that's why I was asking earlier, if you know how many, you know, last meeting, how many homes there are actually in Queen Mountain, and then prorate, you know, just say, look, you people are gonna have to cough up twenty, thirty thousand dollars to get your diser line replaced.
Well, from the thing that Peggy's describing and others, it sounds like it, they could be a really bad precedent.
Well, Colosseum Club has always had water problems. Well, now you're talking about a humongous development out there, and so, we're gonna pay for Queen Mountain's water system, well, why wouldn't we do Colosseum Club? I mean, that's, there's a lot more homes in Colosseum Club than there are in Queen Mountain, but, uh, based on, if you voted on a motion, you'd do the right thing, you would, you know, say, hey, look, we gotta get those people water, but the real, it's business, business is the fact that, I don't think the county is obligated to provide that water service, um, for Queen Mountain. If you did, then you might as well provide it to every citizen that might get it.
I mean, that, that's why I was asking if we don't need a policy for the future, but if, if our officials here think we don't need a policy, but in the obvious case, we should never have another hookup that doesn't have a clear contract.
Well, should the plan board maybe recommend to proceed, maybe some grant writing opportunities or something like that, to assist them, you know?
That's what Justice, he said, he wanted money, but...
Maybe that's, maybe that's the stance the county takes in this world, proceeding probably, I believe, will move in.
And they, they might have, they might be able to, county might be, would be the intermediary to give the grant to bridge the gap to install and that kind of, but...
So maybe the county should, like, should work with the residents of the community?
Or the...
Yeah, if, they get a grant, so it should be involved.
Right, straight to state tax.
Well, any, I think any type of state, I think they'll do with sewer and water, I don't think we should be, as a board, saying we're not, we're not interested in water and sewer, we've got plenty of it right now around Franklin and Highlands, but if there are opportunities that we can get more people water and sewer, it makes sense to...
Because I realize you're talking about...
Right.
...that my tax moving, of course, he needs to, Washington, he might not show them on my county tax notice, but it's still...
Yeah, you're still paying.
I still got money for Bill, plenty of them. I'll put water in the fountain, I suspect.
Okay, so next, I guess what you look at as board is how to try to utilize what we have, or how to try to promote or use of what we have. Maybe the thing to do there is give it to EDC and just have that conversation, thoughts?
I would think, sure, maybe they are, you are, but any kind of business, some locating here, or if you're offering some locating to here, there should be clear maps of where the existing water and sewer lines are, and clear understanding that if they want water and sewer, that's where they need to be, and if they don't want water and sewer, if they don't wanna be there, then they're gonna have to, they're to expand, uh, the systems.
Yeah, I think we said that with the statement.
Yeah, but I mean, having a readily available map would be, is that something, if a developer comes, wants to build a development, is it... comes, wants to build a development, is it really easy to then to see where water and sewer lines are?
Usually, it's fairly existent, that most of the US.
She was asking about.
Ready to wait.
For maps.
Yeah.
But ultimately, what right does the county have to say, we're gonna run a 10-inch water line out to anywhere? We don't have a water system. And that belongs to the town of Franklin, the town of Highlands. So ultimately, the town of Franklin, the town of Highlands is the one that has the final say in which way they're gonna let their water lines go. So we're, we're asked, the carry runs and then it gets them to the municipalities.
Yeah. I totally agree with that.
Right. Well, and the county, I mean, if there's a big development going somewhere, the county might contribute to it because it's tax dollars, if it's a business, it deals, you know, jobs.
I'm gonna dive into the conversation. Something, missing something.
So Matt, will you tell us what we said at some point?
I will make that face. Some representation. Back before we go to the question.
Do we, do we need officially recommend that the county help with grant money? Or is that just something the county's gonna do anyway?
We can do.
I'm sorry.
We can do.
Do we need to recommend that the commissioners help the municipalities or these outlying communities with grant money? Or is that something that the county's just gonna do anyway?
I think if you want to recommend it, so it's continued, just ask about being the instrumental and that kind of thing. You know, the thing get into, you know, I realize the chance that this happens sometimes, but you get a, you know, Florida won't become the location for 300 miles, we're out 64 west, we're gonna need a 6-inch line, we're gonna need a 10-inch line, we're always gonna be tripping over ourselves to try to figure out some way to make that happen. But you know, realistically, you're too many, like, buildings, you're probably have professional areas.
So yes, Bush probably make a recommendation that the county help to facilitate.
Maintenance and repair of.
Right. Make, well, maintenance and repair of.
Of lines outside the town's true, yeah, town.
The ancient water, or the practical, service of the good or something like that.
But which? By building the right areas, not by writing the check. But I think, we're talking about two separate things. You're talking about possible expansion.
Yeah, but I'm saying if we want expansion because we're something, we're gonna have to boost the economy, you know, we more commission around.
I think, I think they're not gonna ask our opinion as well. I heard they're gonna find someone.
We're primarily recommending that those kind of uses first, look at what we've got, rather than them saying, we want to be here, and so we say, okay, we'll, we'll cough it up. And we're primarily asking them to first look at the existing infrastructure.
If we had had this in place, the commissioners had this in place two months ago, what would that have done to Parker Meadows? Could that have gone in there still? Like, we block it back?
No, Parker Meadows is on its own system.
No city water? But if it's own city water, then that's water.
If city water was out there?
No, if it's just wasn't out there and it was a good thing coming into town. I'm just using that as an example.
Well, I think that was sort of following what Mark was saying, if that's the right approach, yeah.
Yeah, they did, the county and the town got together to whatever they wanted to, so they might have written the check.
I mean, we're just saying that at this point, we don't see the need for that expansion and that we are encouraging things to take advantage of the current infrastructure. That's not precluding an exception to that.
It'd just be a matter of the blow for glory back across Florida, with Florida and industrial park up. It's close, it wouldn't be terribly, it was terribly close to the water.
Still several hundred thousand dollars.
So Jimmy, do you think that we need to make, there needs to be something coming from us saying that the county should help facilitate grants?
I don't think it's necessarily, it's good.
I know.
I think it just shows up as part of your discussions and part of your thought process.
All right, so that's it for old business? All right. New business, discuss the need for corridor studies in order to determine future expansion utilization and viability through all existing utilities. I think that goes back into getting the EDC and Parker about.
We had also talked about, asked any commission if we, that having started us just talking about utilities, that it became apparent to us that there were other aspects of corridor development that were cause for concern. And so we talked about, you know, undertaking corridor development planning, not just based on water and sewer extensions, but on how they should take place.
Any thoughts on that? Is that something we want to go to, back to the board and ask them?
Let's talk about it. Just ask this at the next meeting. A lot of heads in the board are not. I don't see a lot of people in you talking.
Can I tell you what I'm gonna talk about?
Sure.
I want internet. I want internet that I can pick up the news.
Well, no, we can't do anything about that unless we can.
I was told two weeks ago that we had internet on Main Street, up to 15 gigabytes down low, and up to two upload.
Wires.
Wires. If I had them go up there and dig up the street, she probably ditched my bill, and maybe it's fine, but the phone company coming in told I had four people, two wiring and two inside people. Why can we not get that overlooked for the general public or even if you could get it? And then it goes back down in a few days. Phone company said it was being blocked.
Who's blocking the phone company?
They didn't, they wouldn't tell me who, but they said it was being blocked, but they were being blocked. Some of these big companies.
Understood that Drake had a wire system around town that's.
They bought it.
Did that fast?
It's the first thing you might ask you when they come in back to county for a business or buying a house. I just had people leave me a while ago while I was late. And your lawyer tried to come into Franklin, that's the first thing they ask when they look to my building up there, is to speed them there.
Yeah, and I'd say it's a common question, but that's more private industry, I would say, more than it is anything towns or counties are involved.
You get enough people complaining, you'll get some action. How to start with.
Because the town of Highlands tried to get an internet business and they were essentially told they can't.
Because it's just irregular.
There was something. Because they were, they could do it and give it away, but they cannot do it itself.
Can they do it with no profit?
I think you can, but you can't make money out of it.
I mean, my feeling is if these companies saw they could make money out of it, they would be doing it.
The town of Forest City is actually doing that right now. They're hooking up several wireless routers all over town to cover the entire town limits with internet.
And no call.
But they have to do it as a nonprofit, yeah.
But it probably is not the speed that you're talking about.
I have no idea.
Is that where Facebook's located? There was something on the news the last couple days, whatever town up in North Carolina that Facebook has one of their data centers, Facebook and another company have come together and they're putting, putting it in the town for free, and it, but it's real fast.
Going back to the corridor development, idea of asking commissioners if we could work on the larger idea of corridor development planning, there have been several efforts done in the past in the county, and they seem to, Matt, you didn't come find any of them? There was one done back in.
That was scattered stuff that, it's really a lot of perfect scenes.
The Division of Community Assistance came and worked with the planning board when 441 was first starting to develop. It gave four different scenarios for corridor development. Number four was don't do anything, that's what we did. I wonder if we, if we do ask the commissioners if we could look at corridor development, it seems like maybe having the Division of Community Assistance come up, because they've worked with counties all over the western part of the state, in fact, all over the state, in various planning efforts like that, and they could shortcut it a lot for us, show us whatever, you know, what possibilities are, because I think a lot, I don't even know what you, you know, what all you could do. So if the commission gives us permission to look at it, I think a good first step would be to have somebody like the Division of Community Assistance come and talk about what does corridor planning need, what does it entail, what are the options, how to put areas to it.
Yeah, I think if they give us that blessing, going to get together and figure out what tools, which I bring to the table.
I mean, even in, even in our discussion or asking for it, we could say that that would be a first step, would be to get some state level information, options presented to us.
Do we have a consensus as a board, that we want to discuss that? Do we, everyone as a board asked to do this? Are we all on board with this?
I'm fine with that. What other items do we have from the commissioners?
Nothing.
One time we talked about storm line regulations.
There's a lot about them on hold right now. Waiting on hold, say, issued for one lane.
Are the counties involved in that review of the, that moratorium? Or is it all taking place in spheres beyond the comprehension?
Beyond the comprehension, correct? Or, we'll see that they're on the occasion.
I've got moratoriums through this box in October.
October 15.
Okay, so Matt's gonna do the summary. Send it out to everybody. Try to get on the agenda.
And do we have to formally request to work on corridor planning, or is that just something you?
Yeah, I'll do your math. Suggest.
Is that the obvious thing?
Yep.
Okay. No announcements, except if you see anybody, please try to attend the meetings. The next meeting is tomorrow.
Two months out, that means you've got something big planned, that's okay. I should be called every day.